Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to take this opportunity to start our meeting this evening. If I could have roll call, please, Mr. Snyder.
Mr. Carlson.
He's unable to be here due to a work commitment.
Mr. Glynnis.
Here.
Ms. Grossak.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. And I believe Harrison Pallant is going to come and help us with that. And if you would stay up here as soon as you're done, please.
Harrison, hand you the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see all of you. And it's good to see my friends from Mrs. Brindo's class, the fifth graders. If you're in fifth grade, raise your hand. I just want to tell you, I love you guys. I do want to say, I was talking at the Tonicus a little bit earlier. Whenever I'm having a bad day, I go to Gates Mills, and I walk in, and I turn right, I walk into their class, and they're just awesome to me every time. I get hugs and high fives. No matter what I do bad, they love me. So that's always a good thing. But we have another special guest from Mrs. Brindo's class. This is Harrison, Harrison Pallant. And Harrison, we have a special honor for you because you are our student of the month. So we have a declaration, and I would like to read this, or proclamation, actually. And I'd like to read it for you and for all of your fans out here, okay? You have a nice smile. The Mayfield City School District and the Mayfield Board of Education present this proclamation to you, Harrison Pallant, student of the month from Gates Mills Elementary. Recognizing Harrison, whereas Harrison is a fifth grader, student at Gates Mills Elementary in Mrs. Brindo's class, and whereas Harrison is a great ambassador of the Gates Mills Way, setting a fine example of respecting self, others, and property. And whereas Harrison is a conscientious about his work and proved to be an exemplary Science Olympiad participant. And Harrison shows great concern for the well-being of others and is exceptionally helpful and surprisingly observant. And Harrison, you show great concern for the well-being of others and is exceptionally helpful and surprisingly observant, which I've already said once. I'm sorry. And whereas Harrison is described by his teachers to be a student who has that rare quality of being on time and paying attention to detail, but aware of the big picture. A fantastic leadership trait, I might add. Harrison is a generally good person with a strong moral character, with great potential to be an excellent student at the middle school. And Mr. Distin, your middle school principal, is here, and some of his teachers are here. So know that. Now therefore, being resolved on behalf of all the members of the Mayfield School community, Harrison is named the Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month for Gates Mills Elementary on this day, May 15, 2013. Congratulations. So now we're gonna take some pictures. Family here? Come on up.
Let's first take a picture with the board. And then I'll just get one with just Harrison, please. And then family. Do it like this. Oh, okay. You wanna get this picture?
No. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Mom.
Thank you.
It's Mr. Shepherd here. Oh, Mr. Shepherd, how are you? It's good to see you. I'm doing great. Thanks for being here. So you get to stand here now as well.
Yay. I don't think I'm cute.
We could take a vote on that.
I'll take a vote.
Okay, all right. Mr. Shepherd, we're here to honor you here as well for your contributions to mathematics. And the Mayfield City School District and the Mayfield Board of Education recognize you, Daniel Shepherd, math teacher, Mayfield High School, for your participation and success with the Greater Cleveland Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Mr. Shepherd was given the Outstanding Mathematics Educator Award by the GCTM during the organization's awards banquet on May 7th at Maggiano's. How was the food?
It was excellent.
The GCTM is an organization of mathematics professionals committed to improving mathematics education in Northeast Ohio. Congratulations, Dan. We're very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Board members, Dr. Kelly and Mr. Snyder, thank you for inviting us tonight to speak. But before we begin, I'd like to introduce the staff. Will you please stand? That is a large portion of our staff. Thank you, staff. You're amazing. Gates Mills had two building goals this year. Tonight's presentation will focus solely on our building goal of creating a culture of learning for all students and staff. I've invited our elected officials of the fifth grade class to help me present tonight. They've been instrumental in helping us create a culture of leadership. At this time, let me introduce our current class president, Emmy Rosky.
Leadership is a very important thing in schools and all over the world. We have to model these things for younger students because they look up to and copy us. They don't always have to look towards their teachers. They can look to us as their role models. We have to model respecting yourself, respecting others, and respecting school property. Now I'd like to introduce my vice president, Wisconsin. Our class made a video to show leadership and the right things to do. Our video will be shown for years to come during the school opening assembly. This video contains bullying, safety drills, recess, and hallway behavior. Now we would like for you to see a small part of our video.
So you say, no children. We're all the children. The kids have not seen the finished product. That's a surprise for them at fifth grade graduation. And they really wanted to see it. But I can tell you, it's an amazing video, and we will put it on our website, and I will send it to all board members after our graduation. I know, that took a lot of guys. Fundraising was a component of the collaborative culture we have been trying to create. Josh Gibson, who was the class president during the first semester of the school year, will share some of our fifth grade class fundraising ideas.
A big part of leadership responsibility was fundraising. Fundraising gets kids to get out and do things for others and learn how to be leaders. It is important to earn money for our school, to help support events to get back to our school. We told Smentzels bookmarks, Gates Mills Notepads, and we had a fundraiser when we taped Mr. Mancini and Mrs. Brindo to the wall. And now I want to introduce my vice president, Micah.
Our antique water fountains were old, and nobody used them because the water was warm and tasted horrible. We decided to donate money to the purchase of a new water fountain. We wrote letters to central office to ask them if they would help us get a new water fountain. Within two days, we had the new water fountain. We appreciated their support, and we're really excited.
What's really important is for you to know that the boys and girls wrote these themselves. Ryan, a fifth grade, Ryan Ramachadi, a fifth grade student, will share with you how we are building a culture through technology.
This year, we continued our learning about the Gates Mills community by exploring our storied past. In our technology class, we created Glocksters. Glocksters are posters that are created using an online program. Every one of us got to showcase a key member of our school or Gates Mills community and a favorite book. Behind me are the projects we created. Not only did we have a blast working on this, we learned a bit more about some wonderful people who are at school and Gates Mills are right around the corner.
And this is just one of our Glockster posters. Check out our website, and you can see some more. What's really important is for you to know that the boys and girls wrote these themselves. Ryan, a fifth grade, Ryan Ramachadi, a fifth grade student, will share with you how we are building a culture through technology.
This year, we continued our learning about the Gates Mills community by exploring our storied past. In our technology class, we created Glocksters. Glocksters are posters that are created using an online program. Every one of us got to showcase a key member of our school or Gates Mills community and a favorite book. Behind me are the projects we created. Not only did we have a blast working on this, we learned a bit more about some wonderful people who are at school and Gates Mills are right around the corner.
And this is just one of our Glockster posters. Check out our website, and you can see some more. We've been building a culture of learning through leadership and development, and also building a culture of learning through some physical changes. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. S., who will share with you the physical changes happening at Gates Mills.
Mrs. S. because no one can pronounce my last name. The kids know. They often think I'm more than one person, Mrs. Sekaric and Mrs. S. In November, we rededicated our space at the Extreme Makeover Library Edition. But really, it was an affirmation of what our library has been all along. A traditional kind of place where kids can expand their horizons and be inspired, whether it's in the computer lab or with me and my rocking chair at the story spot. We are very much attuned to the culture of our little building, the notion that many others came before us, the idea that we are part of a larger Gates Mills community, and our place in it. Our library was and continues to be a safe place where we have always fostered a love of reading, and that, to me, is the real happily ever after.
The staff has been active participants in building a culture of learning through monthly RTI meetings. On the first Monday of each month, I meet individually with each staff member to discuss individual student progress. We study data, set goals, put plans in place for social, emotional, and academic achievement. Our staff meetings are devoted to professional development. This year, we were building a culture of learning through a participation of a book study. Mrs. P., Mrs. D., our building teacher leader, will share with you about our book study.
One of our district goals at Gates Mills School was to work on building culture through collaboration. At our staff meetings, we have been reading and discussing the book, Teaching with Intentions. It's been a wonderful way to open up conversation and to really slow down to think and discuss what we believe cultivates a caring and successful learning environment at Gates Mills School. It's just a really nice book, talking about ways that kind of reaffirm what we've been doing all along.
Thank you again to the board for allowing us to come and share about the culture at Gates Mills. I'm fiercely proud of these boys and girls, of all my boys and girls and the staff, and they're amazing kids and amazing staff, so thank you. Awesome. Thank you very much. Nice job. Very nice job. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Way to go. Good job. Nice job.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much to all of Gates Mills for a wonderful presentation. And with that, we will move on to a presentation of the mathematics curriculum adoption.
We're here to talk a little bit about our math adoption. As most of you know, we are basically adopting a 2014-15 entirely set of learning standards called Common Core State Standards for Math. And our former program, we were using K through 5, really was not going to work in alignment with the Common Core. And so we began this year by asking our third grade teachers to bravely piloted a new program called Investigations. And through the information that was gained through pilot, we made the decision to go ahead and to put the board through, to go ahead and adopt Investigations towards math students in their elementary school grade. Jean Richardson is our math specialist, as you know, and she is really instrumental in making sure that teachers, first of all, understand what the shifts in instructional practice are with Common Core, and also in working with them on a regular basis. She's been meeting with math teachers in K through 5, or actually, K through 5 for Investigations all year long, about a half a day a month at each grade level. And so next year will be the implementation, and all of the teachers have already received a lot of information about what the program would be like, and Jean will be taking the proof. We wanted to share with the board the difference between past and future mathematics instruction.
So just so, for people who don't know me, I think I've taught in every school except the high school in Mayfield. It's my 27th year, so I know the schools well and the teachers that teach within the walls of those schools. So I'm very comfortable being the math specialist in K-8. I even started in center school when there was an open classroom back in the day. But my purpose this evening for the board is to describe to you the reasoning behind selecting Investigations as the district K-5 math program. I promised I would not read any slide, but this slide is really important to read because it's going to be the basis of our discussion in the next five to 10 minutes. In this changing world, those who understand and can do mathematics will have significantly enhanced opportunities and options for shaping their futures. Mathematical competence opens doors to productive futures. A lack of mathematical competence keeps those doors closed. All students should have the opportunity and the support necessary to learn significant mathematics with depth and understanding. As a math specialist, as you heard, I facilitate professional learning communities. And in 2012-13, we spent the year, every grade level, once a month, for about three hours, preparing for teaching the Common Core State Standards for Math. And we knew that one of our charges was to find that perfect math program that would align and help our teachers to become even better math teachers than they already are. I want you to understand that we made many of our decisions based on the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics in the book called Principles and Standards for School Mathematics. It was actually published in the year 2000. And about five to six years ago, many math teachers in the district held a book study to study the pages of this book. It's full of wonderful content, and great conversations were had. Dan was even a part of that group, our awardee this evening. So we want you to understand that within those pages, the NCTM professes six principles that are very important to teaching mathematics, and the teachers and I have discussed these themes. They were threaded throughout our discussions all year. I would like you to know that the K-5 teachers believe all students deserve a quality math education. This principle aligns with our district mission, every school, every day. And we want you to know that all specialists are included in PLC discussions because each of them has a voice, and they need to be advocates for the population of students that they serve. We believe in a coherent, focused, and well-articulated curriculum. Investigations is aligned with the Common Core. It emphasizes rigor, and it emphasizes learning progressions from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, so that it would enhance that math experience for Mayfield students. Our teachers believe in research-based best practice that allows us to discover in our classroom who understands, who doesn't understand, and ultimately, what our goal is, is that their understanding increases over time. And to know that that happens at a different pace for each child that sits before us. We believe that all students learn when they are empowered to construct meaning and are actively engaged in problem solving and inquiry. We believe, like NCTM, that assessment drives our instruction, our decision-making as teachers. Assessment allows students the opportunity to gauge their understanding as they grow from beginning to progressing, to proficient, and to advanced levels of understanding. We also believe that technology enhances our instruction and influences student learning. So those are the six principles from the NCTM that really have driven our decision. We also would like you to know that when teachers teach mathematics, they're seeking things in their students. The things that they're seeking are the processes that the students use as they're coming to understand a concept, and the proficiencies that they need to confront problems in a problem-solving situation. So that means we're seeking those things out as we're teaching. What processes and proficiencies are kids using in the classroom? But it's not only important that we seek those things in our students, but the teachers know we need to develop that also. So we're seeking processes and proficiencies. So you might be asking, well, what are those processes and proficiencies that we seek? The processes are here before you. Problem solving. Are kids good problem solvers? Do they reason about their thinking? Are they talking to each other? Do they connect their learning today with their learning yesterday? How do they represent their thinking through their language, and through their writing, and through their numbers, and words, and pictures? How are they representing that thinking? Okay? Those are the processes that we seek. Here are, oops, more definitions for that? The proficiencies that we seek, I'll go back one more. The proficiencies that we also try to develop are the following. Conceptual understanding, we just want to know, we want to make sure that when we teach that the kids are constructing their own meaning. We would like our math students to become procedurally fluent, that once they construct meaning, then they develop their automaticity with the basic math facts and computations and algorithms. When many of the adults went to school, we started with the algorithm and just practiced the algorithm, and really didn't have too much understanding. Now we're really focusing on understanding. Strategic competence, what strategies are they using? Are they adaptive in their reasoning as students? Do they have a productive disposition? Do they charge forth when they're in their sweet spot? You know, when they're struggling, do they charge forth, or do they give up? So what we need to do as math teachers, and what your teachers in K-5 believe in, is we believe that we need to seek these things out in our students and develop them. The writers of the Common Core that you just heard about have studied these processes and proficiencies brought forth by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, and they just rewrote them into eight important statements, which all the teachers know as "mathematical practices." For the parents, you're going to see this a lot, because it's not only what we teach that's important anymore, those are the standards, but it is how we teach that is really important, and what our classrooms look like. So again, these are the processes and proficiencies brought forth by the writers of the Common Core. And as you look at those statements, you also want to understand that when we're assessing students on what they know, we're also going to be asking them to show us how they're reasoning. So if we give them a test question, we want to align many of our assessment questions with these mathematical practices. If you notice the term PARCC, it's called PARC, and they're developing the new assessment. And those test questions are going to ask students to be able to explain their thinking using these practices. Why did we choose the Investigations program? Well, this is a brain, the inside of a brain. I want you to understand, board, that the Investigations program aligns with connected math, which is a problem-based inquiry program used for 10 years at the middle school, and Core Plus, which is a problem-based inquiry math program used at the high school. So now we've got problem-based inquiry programs all the way through Mayfield, K-12. Now what does that mean? That means we're focusing on meaning and constructing meaning. So if these blue dots here were ideas that students brought to class with them, ideas that they already have, when a teacher brings forth a problem for students to solve, that would be the red dot. When a student constructs meaning, they're trying to connect new ideas to their old ideas. And the more connections they can make, the more meaning becomes apparent, and the more they understand. So that's the type of math class that we want to have, is where students are constructing So like I said before, a problem-based inquiry approach takes the teachers off the stage. So in 10 minutes, the teacher might set the kids to task on a problem. They'll get off the stage, and the students are working together to try to solve that problem, while the teacher is adeptly walking through the groups, asking them to speak to each other, observing what they're reasoning, watching them problem-solve, listening. And then at the end of class, they pull all the kids back together, and then say, so what did we learn from this experience? That's what the type of math classroom we want to have, and we would like to promote in Mayfield. But don't think that we're not worried about procedural fluency and automaticity and the basic skills, because we are. We find that's very important. But remember, like what we said before, construct meaning first, automaticity comes next. Practice, practice, practice. We need both, both of them. And the teachers know that. So when you walk into a classroom in Mayfield, you should see the following. You should see mathematics classrooms that have environments where all students have an equal opportunity to learn. They're focusing, the teachers know that there's a focus on understanding as well as fluency. Students are engaged in problem solving. They're using technology to figure out problems. There are lots of assessments going on, formative and summative, and each child might be different. And students know that there is power in their reasoning, and their ideas are respected. That's what you should be seeing when you walk in a K-5 classroom. So what do teachers think? The math pilot teachers, these are some of the comments that came from the third grade teachers that they saw within a year. Deeper thinking. Students can decompose numbers. Their reasoning has improved. These are all good signs. They can think flexibly. They think it's aligned with the Common Core standards. Less concepts and more depth. So with that said, I would like to say thank you to the board for considering the adoption of K-5 Investigations program. We're excited to align with the middle school and the high school. Your teachers have worked so hard this year studying and preparing themselves for the task at hand as we all move toward this program next year. Does anyone have a question for me or a comment?
I do have a comment, Mrs. Brindo. First, I want to commend you, Mrs. Brady, and the teachers for this work. This is very important work. I also want to commend you for drawing out these very important distinctions in light of the national discourse. of the national discourse on the Common Core. Sometimes people can become very confused about what the Common Core really means. And I think that the work that you and Mrs. Bailey and the teachers and the principals have done is to really draw out what is important to Mayfield, based on these principles set forth by the NCTM, which are critical. So when you begin highlighting things like processes and proficiencies, mathematical practices, problem-based inquiry, procedural fluency, begin drawing those kinds of issues out, it kind of puts the Common Core conversation in a, in a, in a real place for Mayfield. And so thank you very much for doing that. It was a great and simple and succinct presentation.
Thank you very much.
Great work.
We just, it's all about mathematical literacy. That's what it's all about. Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd is still there. Sounds like exciting time.
At this time, this is our time for community communications. Nobody had talked to us ahead of time indicating that they wanted to speak on any issues. Is there anyone present who wanted to speak to an agenda item? There being none, and this being a good opportunity indeed for our students to get home and be able to become well-rested and study. I will move on to president's announcements. The only announcement I have is tomorrow is our Evening of Excellence, so I'm looking forward to that. Move on to board member committee reports.
I have none.
Nothing.
And that brings us to superintendent announcements.
Just a couple of quick announcements. We hope to congratulate, we hope to congratulate Tim Millio, perhaps in another board meeting, who scored a perfect 36 on the ACT, which is very impressive, very, very impressive. Also, Excel Tech continues their, their spring sale on flowers, so I know there's not many people up in the room, but go on out and buy some flowers if you can. And if you hadn't been paying attention, there's a, there's a program called Girls on the Run at the middle school. It's a really neat club that talks about teen issues, particularly specifically young women, and they are preparing for a 5K this weekend, or have been preparing for a 5K this weekend in Akron, so good luck to running that. And I wasn't going to mention the water, that was already brought out. So that would be my report for today.
Awesome. All righty, that brings us to the superintendent's consent agenda. Like a motion to approve items A through Q, please note that N through Q are addendum items.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Let's see who's first this evening. Mr. Glynnis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that we have a couple of our new candidates here this evening. Our staff did a great job. I think we have Leah's here. Leah, would you like to say hello? Leah will be one of our new counselors at the middle school. And also, I think we have a returnee that's going to be teaching Italian as well. Sylvia, welcome and thanks for being here this evening. And thank you for returning.
Welcome and welcome back.
And Rachel, okay? I didn't see, Rachel behind the pole. Middle School Social Studies, so welcome and welcome to Mayfield. You'll love it here.
And we hope we will see you many more times at board meetings because they're so exciting. Riveting, riveting. Next, we move on to other superintendent business, and we have the graduating class of 2013 to be approved. I might add that Mr. Hess has a grandson in that graduating class this year. So a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynnis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And to all of those graduates, congratulations because this was the important part. Ceremony to follow. Next, we have the Ohio High School Athletic Association Resolution for 2013-14, motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And the textbook materials recommendation, motion to approve.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And next, the Investigation K-5 Program in Mathematics.
So moved. Second.
Bear with me one second.
Mathematical hangup.
Yes. Mathematical. A motion from Mr. Glynis, is that correct?
Yes.
And then a second by Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Next, we have the High School Handbook with Section 504 revisions as is necessary by law.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And we move on to the treasurer's report, the financial statements for April 24, 2013. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And a motion to accept the financial transactions.
So moved. Second. Are they correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Yes, always correct.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And one of my favorite sections, donations, motion to approve.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Next, under other treasurer's business, we have the Mayfield High School Fee Schedule for 2013-14. Motion to...
So moved.
Yep. Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And the insurance and sale of notes, motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
I'd only like to add on this recommendation that this is the, a note that we issued related to the school improvement projects, primarily at the high school and specifically at the field house. So we're paying incrementally down this 10-year note, so we're asking you to renew it at a half million. Originally, it was 1.2, so we're paying it down.
Excellent.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Next, we move to the minutes of the April 24 meeting and the meeting, special meeting of May 2. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And the consumable fees pre-K-8 addendum, motion to approve.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Under other business, we have the board policy first reading.
So moved. Second.
Actually, that's just a first reading. There is no, is no motion or second necessary. We'll be coming back in June with second reading and recommended board action. Would simply like to mention that many of these policies are required revisions per changes in state statute, what we're, and federal statute for that matter, and what we're trying to do is keep the board on the biannual approval process, January and June or December and June, so that we can apply typically with the auditor of state's offices. They come in, they're going to be looking specifically for some of these policies. Whistleblower protection, as an example, basically is a policy that is, has emanated out of the state where certain individuals and employees can contact the other state's office, access the website, and they are certainly awarded certain protections for suggesting that there's any kind of improprieties locally, which there aren't, but that's just one example. No, not that kind of whistleblowing. Mr. Wenley.
Is there any, any other business then? There being none, then we will move to executive session.
So moved.
But I have to read, I'm sorry. Executive session for Ohio revised code 121.22G1 to consider employment of public employees. Now you can move.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Glynis.
Yes.
Ms. Grossack.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you all.